Close call to order at 6:17. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Ronnie Manson. Please stand, everybody. Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549.54.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of the special meeting.
Is there anybody wishing to address the City Council? If not, I declare oral communications closed. It's a close order. Next items, please. Close session. Description.
Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section 549.56.8, 549.54B Properties. Approximately .91 acres of land with 2,046 square feet buildings located at 13007 Yukon Avenue, APN 4050-014-002. Approximately 2.16 acres of land located at 12500 Euclid Avenue, APN 4041-009-900. Agency negotiator, Von Truay Norris, City Manager. Other party, 13007 Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC. Under negotiation, price and terms of payment.
Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item as a close session? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this specific item closed. Sword.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to do the roll call?
Roll call, please. Ma'am.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Mayor Protem Reyes English. Mayor Gargus.
Here.
All present except Councilmember Patterson.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a close session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 6:20 PM. We are in recess.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
The 3rd Annual World Fest is back and bigger than ever. Enjoy a multicultural experience of ethnic food and live music. Adult beverages, arts and crafts, carnival games, face painting, prizes, and much more will also be there for the whole family to enjoy. World Fest 2023 happens on Saturday, September 16th, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. at Hawthorne Memorial Park.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements, such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining
the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, et cetera.
to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent
To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne,
to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code.
check local zoning regulations. Come to the business license office for the business license or tax certificate packet.
The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen.
There's also a downloadable version online at www.cidiofthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms.
A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies
Submit your completed application to the business license office for processing.
if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the planning department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the planning office, and they will send you back to business licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? File-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to: The Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department,
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne?
who will check for issues associated with the address, such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally, the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city,
First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements,
ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken,
such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with
and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed.
the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, et cetera.
This document is not given over the counter.
To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne,
Note: If your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process,
check local zoning regulations.
please follow up with that department directly.
Come to the business license office for the business license or tax certificate packet.
What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st.
There's also a downloadable version online at www.cidiofthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms.
Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached.
Submit your completed application to the business license office for processing.
Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given.
Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate.
Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy.
Not all items listed will apply.
If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes.
You may ask who will review your application for approval.
The City does not accept partial payments.
The application will first go to the planning department to confirm the potential location
If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the planning office, and they will send you back to business licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? File-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to: The Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address, such as excessive calls and more.
Take a trip around the world without leaving the City of Hawthorne. The 3rd Annual World Fest is back and bigger than ever. Enjoy a multicultural experience of ethnic food and live music.
The city manager and finally the city attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The city does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
Take a trip around the world without leaving the City of Hawthorne. The Third Annual World Fest is back and bigger than ever. Enjoy a multicultural experience of ethnic food and live music. Adult beverages, arts and crafts, carnival games, face painting, prizes, and much more will also be there for the whole family to enjoy. World Fest 2023 happens on Saturday, September 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Hawthorne Memorial Park.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The City Council is... The City Council meeting is called back to order at 6:57 p.m. with all members present. We've met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as Item 1. City Attorney Kim, can you please provide a readout?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met in closed session. A report was provided to the council regarding the agenda item. The direction was given to the city attorney, and no action was taken.
Is there anything further from council members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 6:57 as well. That took half a minute.